Good evening and welcome to this special meeting of the Nacogdoches Independent School District Board of Trustees. Let the record show that a quarter of our board members present, and that notice of this meeting has been legally posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act. Please remember that items do not have to be taken in the order shown on the agenda, and please join us with turning your cellphones either off or to silent mode. We move to an action item and call Mr. LaRue.
Mr. President Irving, I would like to make a motion that we table this action item until after we have our canvas and office for our board members so they can participate in that discussion.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Fitz, seconded by Ms. Matoria. They're in a discussion? All in favor? I, James Irving, Presiding Officer of the Council and Authority of the Nacogdoches Independent School District Election, held on the 5th day of May, 2018, Nacogdoches County, Texas, do hereby certify the following as a total of all votes received by each candidate. I further certify that the following votes totals include early voting votes by the district received under Sections 87.1231 of the Texas Election Code. District 4, Terrell C. Gromon, 246 votes. District 4, Demond Jackson, 105 votes. District 5, Russell R. Smith, 254 votes. District 5, Mindy Beany Winslow, 361 votes. This time we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve the Declaration of Canvas Results and certify the announced election returns as true and correct for Mayfield 2018 vote of trustees election.
Second. It has been both moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Okay, at this time we will call Ms. Holly to, and ask the candidates to please, the new trustees to come forward.
I, Terrell C. Gromon, do solemnly affirm-
That I will faithfully execute-
That I will faithfully execute-
The duties of the office-
The duties of the office-
Of trustee District 4-
Of trustee District 4-
Of the Nacogdoches ISD Board of Trustees-
Of the Nacogdoches ISD Board of Trustees-
Of the State of Texas-
Of the State of Texas-
And will to the best of my ability-
And will to the best of my ability-
Preserve, protect, and defend-
Preserve, protect, and defend-
The Constitution and laws-
The Constitution and laws-
Of the United States-
Of the United States-
And of this state-
And of this state-
So help me God.
So help me God.
Ms. Gromon.
Repeat after me. I, Mindy Winslow, solemnly affirm-
I, Mindy Winslow, solemnly affirm-
That I will faithfully execute-
That I will faithfully execute-
The duties of the office-
The duties of the office-
Of trustee District 4-
Of trustee District 4-
Of the Nacogdoches ISD Board of Trustees-
Of the Nacogdoches ISD Board of Trustees-
Of the State of Texas-
Of the State of Texas-
And will to the best of my ability-
And will to the best of my ability-
Preserve, protect, and defend-
Preserve, protect, and defend-
The Constitution and laws-
The Constitution and laws-
Of the United States-
Of the United States-
And of this state-
And of this state-
So help me God.
So help me God.
I want to begin by congratulating and welcome our new Board of Trustees, new members of the Board of Trustees. Thank you so much, and just want to highlight a, an email from Mr. Russell Smith, who wanted to be here personally to turn his seat over to you, but unfortunately because of his work schedule, he would not be here, but he do, he did send his best regards. Thank you so much. Glad to have you guys. All right, we will now go straight to the action agenda and call Mr. LaRue.
Good evening, President. Irving, board members, interim superintendent, Ms. Fraley. You have, before you, a request of $41,380 for chaplain improvement at Natty Marshall. What questions can I answer this time?
I think we good to kind of explain exactly what these are for. I know when we say it's restroom renovations.
Yes, restroom renovations. These are the restrooms directly behind the cafeteria. These are the, some of the original restrooms built in the 30s. They have the original fixtures and hangers. The hangers are the arms, the carriers that come through the wall and hold the wall mounted toilet up. In each restroom, we have at least one that's completely broke off the wall. The old metal carriers are just rusty and fatigued since the 30s. There are at least three others that are leaning and getting ready to give way. What we're going to have to do is come in and take all the stalls out, actually tear out the wall that the hangers come through, reframe the wall, put in new hangers, and new fixtures. We'll reinstall the existing stalls in both the men's room and the ladies' room. Neat is done.
Has the facilities committee had a chance to review this project?
I don't believe so.
Okay. My question, Mr. LaRue, is that I don't recall this, out of all of the projects we've discussed, and I know facilities committee has been working toward a prioritized list that we can attack things-
Yes.
-in top priority. This is the absolute first time I've heard anything about the restrooms at Natty Marshall. So how does that stack up against everything that's already been put on the priority list, and where did this kind of come out of nowhere from?
It came out of nowhere because in each restroom during this, this recent school year, the toilets broke off the wall. So they, you know, kind of created its sleeping monster. It just decided it was time to give up. Upon investigation, we can see that there's others that are about ready to do that. So that's, you know, we have, we have another project we're working on right now at Davis Gym over at TJR campus. There's six massive doors that go out onto the playground. Two of those came off the wall recently. They're all rotten. They're going to need replaced. We're working on numbers for that. These type of small projects are going to keep creeping up because our buildings are aged and you can't, can't see into the wall to see if it is fatigued or not fatigued.
I know. We've, we've discussed it several times, and I know we share the perspective that we've got to get into a proactive stance, not a reactive stance. It sounds very much like you're saying this is kind of an emergency situation that cropped up on us.
Well, developed over this school year, and, you know, summer's the time to fix it. We've had the Dickens of the time getting people in to look at the job. It's not a glamorous job. It's not a big job.
In your bid, you, you list three, but only one-
Only one chose to bid on the job.
Okay.
There's a lot of work in the area right now. It's just not a, all we can do is put it out there on the street and talk to people-
Go from there.
Try to invite them in, and if they choose not to bid, having looked at the job, there's not much we can do.
Mr. LaRue, is the plumbing in good shape in those bathrooms, or are you going to-
Well, the bright side about a unit falling off the wall allowed us to knock a bigger hole in the wall and get back into that chase and take a look at the pipes. We're going to have to replace, this bid includes the replacement of the majority of that. We've not had any problems with things backing up on that line, so we don't see it to take problem. But, you know, it is a 1930-some original line, so we'll be replacing everything we can get to. We won't go under the slab.
What about the flooring, the, just the top flooring? Is that still in good shape, or-
Yeah, we'll be fine with the flooring. These, these are hung on the wall.
Mr. President, if I could add. We're looking at all facilities all the way around because we have a lot of need, but this is one that just popped up. So we're going to have from time to time, you have very old, very old buildings, and we have a small maintenance crew, so you're going to have lots of things that pop up. from time to time. And this is a short-term fix. That's why we're really kind of limiting the scope of it from what I can, I can tell. Because we need, we have bigger renovations that need to take place. So you want to do what you got to do right now, but not waste funds because you want to do something bigger later on. Just, just, we're just kind of adjusting time. That's why we have it on the agenda for today versus Thursday. So we want to get this started.
We don't, if we don't get a contractor committed, they're going to take up the work. It's just that simple. And it's one of those school, school scheduling issues. When you get a bathroom down, a couple stalls down in a bathroom, you're taking a bathroom break with the classroom, it, it lengthens that time that everybody's tied up in a bathroom break.
Well, I want to get to, and the larger issue I think now is communication and make sure that the board is aware of these types of things, and we feel in regard, but we'll take care of that.
Mr. President, due to the fact that it's an emergency and we go and get it done and complete it for next year, I move that the board approve the bid of forty-one thousand three hundred and eighty dollars from COPS Contractors for the renovation of the Natty Marshall at Camden Dual Language Restrooms.
I second that.
Moved by Mr. Neal, second by Coach Fashi. Is there any other further discussion?
I just wanted one more question. In regards to the contractors that bid on this, you only had one contractor that bid, so he's not going to back out of this bid if they, if they get it.
He looked at another job. Over the weekend, we looked at another job, and he said if he, if he hears properly, he's still good. So I'm hoping to text him tonight and he can pencil us in.
No further discussion, all in favor? And the vote is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. LaRue. The board will now conduct an executive closed session to discuss the items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provision of the Texas Open Meeting Act and as allowed by Texas Government Code Section 551.071, 551.074, and 551.129. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. In action, the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in open session. And it is now five forty-seven.
From reconvening into open session and it is 6:17. We'll now move to our Board, uh, election of board officers. The floor is now for nominations for President.
Mr. President, I can nominate Pat Fitch for Board President.
I second the motion.
It has been motioned by Mr. Montoya, second by Mr. GW Neal that Ms. Fitch be President in the discussion. All in favor? Thank you so much. Thank you guys for allowing me to serve. Ms. Fitch, raise your hands.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I will now call for nominations in order to elect the Vice President of the Board of Trustees. I would ask for nominations.
Madam President, I nominated Mr. GW Neal as Vice President.
I second.
Mr. Merriman made a motion for Mr. Neal as Vice President, seconded by Dr. Gromon. Are there any further nominations for the Office of Vice President? All right. All those in favor of Mr. Neal for Vice President, raise your right hand, please. All opposed? Motion was unanimous. Now we'll move to nominations to elect the Secretary of the Board of Trustees. I would open the floor for nominations.
Again, Madam President, nominated Mr. James Montoya as our Board Secretary.
Mr. Merriman?
I second.
Seconded by Ms. Winslow. Are there any other nominations for the position of Secretary? Hearing none, I will call all those in favor of Mr. James Montoya for Secretary to raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, I would entertain a motion. So moved. Thank you, sir. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, sir.